While this meeting is in order, please silence your electronic devices so we can conduct our business and stand for the invocation. Join me in the Lord's prayer, please.
Our Father, our Son, and Holy Spirit, be thy name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses if we forgive those who trespass against us. It is not an attemptation to address a meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Perkins speaking.
Notre Dame submitted an application for 5K on Saturday, September 30th, 9:00 a.m. to noon. They will start and end at the high school, Notre Dame High School, and would run throughout the city.
Any questions or concerns on that? Jane, next one?
The bid submitted their application for their wine walk on Saturday, October 7th, 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. There will be 23 businesses participating in the wine walk.
Any questions on that?
I have one question. Are we gonna, we did that blanket resolution, and I noticed that now there's a box on the form that says, "Will you need a waiver something to reference the BMC code to, you know, bypass the BMC code violations for downtown?" So that's automatic now, as long as they check that box and everything else verifies?
Now, if you're speaking of open container, and I'm sorry I didn't know that was on here, I'll defer to the city attorney, but we may need a separate resolution.
I think to the extent it's a uniform resolution for a defined period, it's probably in place already.
Okay, we can go back and check that then.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that we did one knowing that, you know, that we would do one for the summer.
Only a Japanese square, though. So let us get back to you on that?
Yeah, that was my question. Do we need an actual resolution waiver to do that, or is checking that box sufficient?
If we do, the event occurs by or to the next meeting, so, um, yeah. We'll have to look.
Because it quotes 34 days seven of the city code, and there's a yes or no. It's on, I don't know what page, I think the first page of the application at the bottom. So look into that and we'll prepare for this time. And next one?
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
The BDC submitted their application for the indoor farmer's market. This will be on Saturdays, October 28th through March 30th. It's not all Saturdays, but they are listed there on the application. From 10:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. in the city center concourse, there will be vendors selling vegetables, produce, meats, and crafts.
Any questions on that?
Yeah. Does each vendor have to get a separate license to sell alcohol?
No. So the vendors that would sell in any type of market would be licensed through the market and insured through the market operator unless they were a health or a food vendor, then they need the health permit, like with any type of event. So they would sign up with the BDC similar to the farmer's market, like they do outdoors, and then are able to come in and be a vendor inside city center in a winter market. Is that your question? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I didn't understand how it works, the mechanics of it. Do they actually have to manufacture the alcohol themselves to qualify? I mean...
Oh, for a farm market?
Yeah. I mean, can a guy go to a liquor store, buy a case of whiskey, and take it to the farmer's market and sell it?
Probably not.
It's my impression it's under their, it's their produce, it's their art, and it's not, and it specifically said, "Not for on-premise consumption." It's to buy and leave with. So whatever liquor license they're under from the state, that's up to them. It's up to them. And any insurance would be covered by the marketing, right?
I've only seen people vending their own products at these types of events.
Pardon me? They can't sell third-party products.
Okay, so they can. Oh, okay.
No, I mean, this is basically for producers.
Any other questions on that? Okay. The next city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 10th. It's Tuesday, October 10th because of Columbus State holiday. 7:00 p.m. City Hall Council Boardroom, second floor, city center. We have a proclamation today. Thad, come on, come up. Whereas Thaddeus Mark has retired as a detective from the city Batavia Police Department on August 19, 2023, after 17 years of service, and Thad began his career with the city Batavia Police Department on August 5th, 2006, as a police officer. He previously served our country as an operations specialist, E5, in the United States Navy, before going on to serve as a border patrol agent at the U.S.-Mexican border. And Thad distinguished himself during his career as a police officer by becoming a field training officer, general topics instructor, serving as department liaison to Veterans Treatment Court, and was a crisis negotiator. Thad has promoted the sergeant before becoming a detective in 2013. During his time as a detective, he assisted in many high-profile investigations and became certified as a polygraph examiner. He has been recognized for his outstanding police work by multiple agencies, citing his professionalism, attention to detail, and steadfast approach. And Thad has served his country, his community, and his department with honor and dedication, its approach to investigations with methodical and unrelenting. He demonstrated professionalism and courage and has been an outstanding trainer to many officers. He has never sought out the spotlight, but has worked tirelessly to keep the community safe by thoroughly investigating every crime and call for service he was assigned. Now therefore, in the true spirit of appreciation for 17 years of dedicated service to the city of Batavia, the city council of the city of Batavia does hereby make this proclamation to sincerely thank Thaddeus Mark for his dedicated service to our community and wish him well in his retirement.
Thank you. This has been a great career, and we have a great problem. I'm very thankful for spending honor and service in Batavia and to work with other officers over the years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Council President. We will be putting the screen down. I regret to inform you, you will have to move your seats. And Erica, Erica's already on there.
I made my way, yeah.
I didn't introduce you, but you're on top of it.
Yep.
So Erica Handley from Drescher and Malecki. She's been, we've been with Drescher and Malecki for two full years now. After switching from Freed, Maxick, and Bataglia, we did conduct an audit committee meeting, and Erica's here to go over the highlights of the audit as soon as we get everything up on the screen. You guys do have a paper version of the presentation in front of you, if you'd like to follow along.
I think we're all ready.
You're trying to dress up. We'll just play the jeopardy. There we go.
You've got a good joke.
I bet you do.
We hope, that's what we ask.
They're always on your Facebook page.
World of Pirates by their hawks.
Where?
It's a hand story. He said, "Good jokes." I didn't hear the good part.
Well, if you want, where you guys were kind of, Erica can start, because we have, everyone has their other copies, and if we get it going, we'll...
Yeah, that sounds great.
We'll do it, but, all right, council has the presentation, so they can take a look.
Yes, great. My name is Erica Handley. I am a director with Drescher and Malecki, and I'm here to present to you the results of the city's March 31st, 2023 fiscal year end that we audited. As mentioned in front of you, you have the presentation that I'll go through, and you also have the full set of financial statements in front of you. Those are in draft form at this point. They contain the proposals that we'll come to today in terms of fund balance classifications and potential increases and adjustments to the reserves. Moving through the presentation, the first slide outlines what the products of our audit are, so what the actual deliverables that you will receive once the audit has been finalized. First and foremost, we issue a financial statement opinion that is in front of you in the package that you have. We receive information directly from the finance department, and our responsibility as your auditors is to take that information and provide an opinion on the financials. So within that document in front of you, the only thing that we take ownership over, thank you, is the opinion pages. The rest of the information comes directly from management, and the city takes ownership over. This year, we also issue a single audit opinion. This is your federal compliance audit. Because the city spent over $750,000 in this fiscal year of federal funds, that automatically triggers a compliance audit. We act as an agent of the federal government and test those federal funds for certain compliance requirements. So the program that we tested was the highway planning program, and we performed a series of tests as dictated to us by the federal government to ensure that those federal expenditures are allowable, that they are in a timely fashion, that the reporting is done correctly. We had no issues with that testing that we did this year, but that just is something that is new this year as compared to last year. The last, third item there is the auditor communication letter. I'll go through that a little bit more detail on the next slide. We also issue what's referred to as a management letter. This is a letter that contains certain housekeeping items, any areas of best practices, future accounting standards that are coming up that the city should be aware of, that will be formalized upon completion of the audit as well. And then the last item on this list, your New York State Department of Transportation audit. This again gets triggered because of the amount of money that's spent of federal money. It then requires you to have an audit of the New York State DOT funds. So that's different compared to last year as well. We perform that, a series of compliance with the New York State DOT funding that comes in. We had no issues during that testing. There we go, okay. The next slide presents the auditor communications that I referenced before. This is a series of communications that is pretty standard year to year that we are required to communicate with you, as well as the audit committee. This is what our responsibility is under generally accepted auditing standards. Our responsibility as your auditors are to perform tests over the financial information that we are given to determine what that opinion is on the financial statements and to determine if your financial statements are, can be relied upon by a user. We did, we do plan to move forward issuing an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That's a clean opinion. That's the best that you can do from an audit perspective. We are also required to communicate with you certain different accounting policies of the city. Those are included in footnote one to your financial statement. The city did implement a new governmental accounting standards board statement this year. For your information, it doesn't have any impact on the day-to-day accounting transactions. It doesn't have any impact on your fund balance amounts. It just has an impact on the way leases are reported within the financial statements. I won't get into more detail because there's a lot of accounting lingo, but I'm happy to answer any questions if anyone has any further on those. Significant accounting estimates, the financial statements do contain certain estimates. This is routine in audits that we perform. Our responsibility is to evaluate those estimates, what the inputs are on them, and we have determined that they are reasonable. Independence is probably the most important thing that you look for in an external audit. Everyone in our firm, everyone who works on the audit, does sign off as being independent of the city, so no issues there. And then if there were any other matters that we were required to communicate with you, we would within this letter. We had full cooperation of all the departments that we were in contact with, no disagreements with management or any, anyone that we worked with, so nothing to report there to you. Moving now to some of the financial trends, this slide here represents a five-year trend of the general fund of the city, the revenues, which are at the blue line, versus the expenditures, which are the red line. So for the 2023 fiscal year, you can see the blue line, total revenues of the general fund reached $20.7 million as compared to expenditures, the red line, which increased to $18.4 million. Of note, within those revenues, there were certain one-time revenues that accounted for that difference from 2022 to 2023. Those were increased sales tax. There was also, also an increase in delinquent taxes that were collected during the year. And then the third large item of, a one-time item was the Genesee County additional distribution that the city received during the year. On the expense side of things, expenses increased about $1.7 million from the prior year. That had a lot to do with overall costs related to public safety and transportation, certain inflationary costs, increase in salaries, equipment purchases, all went into that increase from the prior year. Overall, your fund balance as a result increased by about $2.3 million in the general fund. And the next slide shows what that component of fund balance is. So at the end of 2023, the general fund total fund balance reached $11.7 million. Again, that increase of about $2.3 million from the prior year. This slide presents total fund balance as it is broken out into the different categories. Again, this includes what is being proposed to council for reserve increases tonight. So the red section includes those restricted reserves coming to a proposed amount of about $6.9 million. There are certain assigned and committed funds. Those are earmarked by the city of about $900,000. And then that blue section represents unassigned or available fund balance at year end of about $3.8 million. This slide here presents the unassigned fund balance of the general fund over the last four years. So again, that's three, about $3.8 million at year end. And as a percentage of the subsequent year's appropriations, that amount is about 19.7% of the subsequent year's appropriations. The city's fund balance policy strives to have unassigned fund balance between 15 and 25%. So you're within that range, considering the proposed reserve adjustments. And then I'll just briefly take you through some of the business-type activities, so sewer, water, and city center. This slide presents a lot of numbers here. This is the way it's presented on the financial statements. Your business-type activities contain all of those long-term items, so those are different from your general fund that does not show capital assets or long-term items on a fund statement basis. The sewer, water, city center do. But these slides here, we're going to pull out some of those long-term items. So we pull out capital assets, certain long-term liabilities, to come up with what would be an estimated fund balance if you were looking at it on a short-term perspective, like the county or the city's general fund. So pulling out those long-term items, an estimated fund balance, so your current assets, current liabilities, equity position of about $13.1 million in sewer, water fund of about $8.6 million, and city center of about $221,000. Again, those are just estimated fund balances, so those aren't actually what's presented in the financial statements, but those are a snapshot of where you are with current assets and current liabilities. Those are really infrastructure-heavy funds, so you want that equity position to be pretty strong so that you're able to keep investing in those infrastructure assets, taking a look at your long-term capital plans, and making sure that you are in a stable position to keep maintaining those. Again, overall observations, we do plan to move forward issuing an unmodified opinion, that clean opinion. We did not have any reportable findings, no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies. Considering that compliance audit we did this year, a whole bunch more testing, no compliance findings, so nothing to report there. A clean bill of health, the city's certainly in a stable position. And then the last slide just has my contact information and also the contact information of the partner on the engagement, Matt Montalvo. He was here last year, and he's also available for questions, should anyone on the council have them in the future, at any point in the year. We're happy to help, and I'm happy to answer any questions now, if anybody has any. It's a lot of information you can read through those financial statements. Maybe you'll have some questions then, but again, we're, it's a pleasure to work with the city, and we're here to help and we're here to answer questions throughout the year. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I don't know if you guys noticed or not, you were on the committee, right, Richmond?
Yes, certainly.
Your memo lists a Ms. Barrett being at a meeting, and I don't know why that's in there. I think that's a mistake, so do you want to correct that before we get the official, because it says it was drafted? You see her in talkroom?
I saw that. I didn't know where they came from. Well, I mean, I wasn't at the meeting, so that's why I'm asking you now.
So, yep, Kathy was the former audit with Freed, Maxick, after Laura Landers left. I think it was just a, we'll call it a Scribner's error, that needs to just say, Ms. Handley or Matt Montalvo.
Yeah, what were the names of the present auditors?
I don't have that.
If we can have that before we, I think we'll be officially accepting it at the next, at the business meeting, so if it could be corrected, I mean, it'd be helpful. Thanks.
Yep, it should say Matt Montalvo.
You'll take care of it. Rachel, do I have somebody to take care of that?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of council. I'll keep us moving here. I've been asked to come and give a brief update on the Batavia Home Fund to you folks and go through a little bit about what the fund's about. If you recall, last year, we had members from both the town and the GCEDC here, and Mark Massey gave a presentation about the proposal for the Batavia Home Fund, which is a joint fund between the three entities, and is designed for facilitation of remediation, rehabilitation, and redevelopment of market rate housing in single-family homes in the city of Batavia. About two weeks ago, I issued a memo, as well as the GCEDC put out a press release in regards to funding this program with $100,000 in seed money from the GCEDC. So we're off and running. It's been about a year in the making, but we're really excited to be here and get going. I actually had my first phone call today with a developer, asking some questions and trying to get more information, so we're pretty happy to be doing what we're doing. So, in regards to the fund and what it's for, there's three different activity types that we're looking to help with. New builds, renovations, and conversions. So in regards to new builds, we're looking for market rate. The money can go towards market rate housing projects that involve land acquisition, demolition, anything that's going to help move that forward, as well as be used towards matching funds for projects in the boa and in the flood zones. For renovations, there's a few examples in here of what that can go for. Hazmat remediation, help with the flood zone areas, infrastructure modernization, properties mostly that cause community blight and neighborhood blight, and grants for owner-occupied, single-family home exterior rehabilitation. And then conversion, as well as to go towards, thank you, multifamily conversions into those single-family homeowner-occupied buildings. No, thank you. So new construction, we just received in the last couple of weeks a draft of LaBella's 2023 Boa Housing Needs and Market Analysis. A lot of this information comes from that. It's not totally official yet, but I stole some stuff from them anyways. In regards to that, 43% of new housing in 2040 is expected to be new market rate townhomes and multifamily. And what they're really putting an emphasis on, and what people want to see, is those small lots, single-family homes. So nobody really wants to have that half acre of land anymore that they got to take care of and do stuff with. And there's a severe undersupply of affordable rental housing and homes for higher-income level households. So going forward over the next 20 years or so, that's going to be the focus for new construction. Renovations, obviously, 47% of the housing stock in cities eight years or older. So we have a lot of our housing stock that is needed renovations. There's a lot of community and neighborhood blight that we want, that's money to go help fund. And we all know that renovating homes gives a sense of belonging, leads to neighborhood morale. And again, if one house does it, the next house is going to want to do it to keep up with the Joneses, and before you know it, we've done a couple houses in the neighborhood, and the whole neighborhood starts to take off and get back to its beauty and its glory that we know it can be. Conversions, we've been very successful downtown with converting old buildings. Models show that the city will need to increase our housing units by 985 units by 2040. 55% of these will be newer converted units into single-family homes. So this fund is designed to help fund those projects as we move forward. And obviously, we mentioned before that changes in population, age, household size are requiring those smaller family homes, townhomes, those kinds of things that we want to try to utilize this money for. So we have a committee of three people right now. It's a representative of the city, representative of the GCEDC, representative of the town that will score the projects as they come in, and we've come up with this scoring chart to help us out. So it has to be a priority of the city. So 20 points will be awarded, up to 20 points, if it has anything to do with the boa strategy, if it's in either one of our opportunity zones, Ward 3 and Ward 6, or if it's in the flood zone. 40 points will go towards projects that are of historic value or in danger of being lost, totally rundown, need to be demolished, anything like that. And then obviously, we're going to give 40 points to anything that's going to have a positive neighborhood impact. So really help us to improve our neighborhoods. Collaborations, multiple landlords and tenants get together to decide they want to do some work and really upgrade the neighborhoods. That's a huge focus of this project. So parameters, because there's, there's some, and we actually tried to make these, even though there's a lot of them, we tried to make them as simple as possible for folks to follow, so we can get a lot of applicants for these, for this money. So projects must include visual improvements to the property. We want to see where our money's going. It's important to us. 40% of the costs, not, not to exceed the parameters for the costs of a total project, so there's between $10,000 and $50,000 available for each project. Obviously, with $100,000 to start, we're not going to try to give away two $50,000 projects. We're going to start with the smaller ones and build that up. But it can go up for up to 40% of that cost. It is a reimbursable grant, which means the work has to be done. You must have a certificate of occupancy, or a permit closeout, to, in order to receive the funding, and all funds must be paid for upfront. So that's important. And then lastly, eligibility. First and foremost, properties must be located in the city of Batavia, and you must get it pulled from a licensed contractor. In-kind expenses do not count towards this grant, so still you're aware of that. Advocate must be current on all taxes, property, water, sewer, et cetera. You must have the building permit prior to construction, and you must have the ability to finance the entire project and submit for reimbursement when the project is completed. Proposals should include proof of readiness, proof of ownership, deed, purchase, et cetera, and that 100% financing is in place. So we want to, we want to really wrap our hands around what we think is going to be successful projects, so that this money can then get paid out and make a difference. So that's a brief overview. Any questions? It is a reimbursable grant, which means the work has to be done, you must have a certificate of occupancy, or a permit closeout in order to receive the funding, and all funds must be paid for upfront, so that's important. And then lastly, eligibility. First and foremost, properties must be located in the city of Batavia, and you must get approval from a licensed contractor. In-kind expenses do not count towards this grant, so still you're aware of that. Advocate must be current on all taxes, property, water, sewer, et cetera. You must have the building permit prior to construction, and you must have the ability to finance the entire project and submit for reimbursement when the project is completed. Proposals should include proof of readiness, proof of ownership, deed, purchase, et cetera, and that a hundred percent financing is in place. So we want to, we want to really wrap our hands around what we think is going to be successful projects, so that this money can then get paid out and make a difference. So that's a brief overview. Any questions? We're really excited about this, this along with the CBDG grant that we applied for that we hope to find out about in December is really going to kickstart our housing initiative here in the city. One more thing that's kind of related but not related is that we, I spent a lot of time, Rachel and I, keeping an eye on the market and what's going on, and over the weekend we saw a market report that came from Northonagel in regards to houses for sale. It can be found on their website, and you can drill it down right into the city of Batavia. It gives you a current period versus a last month, last year, et cetera. Just some quick data from this that I thought you guys would be interested in. Year-to-date home sales from 2023 through August versus 2021 through August, we're down thirteen homes, versus 2022, we're down seven. And that's out of, I believe, I'm not going to give you that number, twenty-eight to date, no, twenty-two to date, sorry. One of the neat things that's in there is that homes that sell for under a hundred thousand dollars, which is a lot of our multi-unit homes and some other smaller homes in the city, they sit on the market two times longer than houses that are listed at a hundred thousand to two hundred thousand, and they sit on the market five times longer than houses that are high on the four hundred to five hundred thousand. So it's really hard to get those houses to turn around and get sold in the city, so basically, we'd like to say it would really have been flat over the last few years, if not a little bit down for our market in the city. So something that we're going to keep an eye on, and hopefully we'll continue and grow as we go forward, so.
Eric.
Yes?
In all of this, obviously, we have a huge need for housing for young professionals, because that's the group that we're trying to attract here. But another concern, we talked about it, it's come up in studies, is reasonably priced either apartments, townhomes, or single-family homes, small, single-family homes for seniors. We have a number of seniors, and I just got a phone call the other day from a senior with the concern of, you know, of what are we doing about the seniors? And so I look at, unfortunately, my group of friends who are, you know, baby boomers that are now in that senior category. I had a friend just had a new build in Churchville, a townhome, that I would have loved to see him come to Batavia, but there really wasn't anything here for them. So they went to the closest place, and that's Churchville. And, you know, it's a fairly expensive townhome, but it's available, and ironically, his backyard neighbor is also a Batavia former resident that grew up here with us, a little bit older. So there's, that's all pointing to a need here for that senior crowd as well. We're not looking for subsidized housing for seniors necessarily, but reasonably priced, you know, housing for seniors. Is that included in this picture at all?
Yes, it's included in our housing strategy, it's included in this home fund. The contractor I spoke with today is actually interested in doing just that, he's got some land on Pearl Street that he's looking to potentially turn into that. I deal with this on a daily basis because my parents are looking to get out of their eighteen ninety house on Tracy Avenue, they're on waiting lists for things and stuff like that. Our housing group that's met multiple times, that's been a big focus of theirs, is what are we going to do about that population? It's obviously the largest population we have, and we have to start finding stuff for them. As we talk about Creek Park and some of these other things, it's in our minds as far as what we can do for that as well, so it's definitely a priority of ours as we move forward.
We struggle with available land, we're five square acres, right? So there's only so much available land, so building two, three-story townhomes doesn't give you as much density as a high-rise apartment, but it does give you that more cottage feel, something that'd be better for retirement. So there's multi-different options and areas that we're looking at housing for, and varying different types as well. But without more land somehow, some way, there's going to be a cap to that. There are definitely sites across the city that are underutilized, like the Harvester, which is twenty-nine acres, and if some of that could be moved into housing and we can convince the owners of the Harvester, that it would be in their best interest, in the city's best interest, to move forward with any type of housing, we'd be very happy to help facilitate that.
And again, we're talking, you know, over forty percent of our homes are over eighty years old, most of those are two-story, you know, three, four-bedroom homes that just don't fit that demographic anymore.
Because they have stairs.
Because they have stairs, right? I'm limping around today, worried about having to go upstairs, so, I get it.
And many of these older homes have one bathroom.
Yep, upstairs.
And it's a tub.
My house.
And it's a bathtub, so you got to be able to get into that as well, I understand. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Yes. Sure. Just if we can change the memo, I also did review the application, kind of replaced Kitten Casino, which Kathy and Heidi did sign in the information. I also approved it. I think Pam's a great fit, she's a lifelong resident, over fifty-three years in Batavia, she's already served on the board, she's a volunteer at the Howland Land Office and the Richmond Memorial Library, she's a vice president and the treasurer of Genesea area, I can't even say it, genology group, and I think her goal is right, she wants to preserve the history in the city and buildings, so I think she's a perfect fit, and I hope to leave this over.
Any questions? And I, yeah, where does she live? What part of town? I don't need to read.
Cross.
Oh, okay. So we in favor of moving that forward to the business meeting?
Yes.
Yes, it's moved. Assignment of unassigned fund balance to reserves.
Yes, thank you, Council President, members of council. As discussed in the audit review, the city ended the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three in a good position to move unassigned fund balance to reserve accounts for future one-time purchases. I have discussed the following proposals with the Audit Committee, who concur that we have the ability to reserve two point one million dollars in funding and still maintain a twenty percent unassigned fund balance, which was approximately three point eight million dollars. While we do have, and you all know, a plethora of competing interests across the city, from parks, trees, recreation facilities, vehicles, et cetera, I've reviewed the capital and asset plans for each department, and the requests that we have received from council and citizens and recommend the following funding reserve accounts. So I can go through them one by one, or, and we can talk about each one, or however you'd like to do it. I can start, and you can interrupt me when you have a question, but first I recommend a hundred thousand dollars for police, for continued investment in patrol and detective vehicles. Our oldest marked car is a twenty seventeen, and our oldest detective vehicle is a two thousand and nine, so we do continually try to replace those vehicles, and by setting aside these reserves, we're able to do so on an annual basis. Also, radios and other technology replacements can also be purchased through the reserves accounts. The second recommendation is three hundred thousand for fire. I'd like to build the reserve to pay off the pumper that will be delivered this fall. As you may remember, last year about this time, we agreed to bond with USDA for that truck, and also we received a hundred thousand dollar grant. By putting three hundred thousand dollars in, we'll have almost enough to pay off that entire truck. So we want to still do the calculations on what's better with the rate we got a year ago versus paying it all off, but this would certainly help go towards that and other future purchases. Four hundred thousand to DPW reserves, this is the reserves where all of our snowplows, snow removal equipment, dump trucks, vehicles for the inspections department and others come out of, and we continually try to replace trucks as they age out. The ice rink, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to continue to build the reserve in anticipation of the replacement of the chiller. We have started the design process. By using NAIPA, we're able to do a design-build, which is not something government can typically do, we have to design, bid, build, but because NAIPA is the financier, they're able to do that. However, unfortunately, I just got a memo from Tom, sorry, your memo, Tom, but we do have to make an emergency purchase, and we will be asking for reserve spending of over thirty-eight thousand dollars for refrigerant and oil just to keep the chiller running for this season. So when we talked about it being on its last legs, it certainly was. And this will certainly help, and we're still waiting on the grant that will be announced in December, we hope we can get that, but otherwise, we have the ability to finance and make debt payments on the chiller. Facilities, I'm recommending four hundred thousand dollars for the facilities reserve. We have undertaken multiple projects just this past year, Brett is doing a great job leading the project at the Fire Department and the Bureau of Maintenance, but this is just one of multiple needs we have across the facilities, including City Hall, and I'd like to see a large cushion as we move forward with the construction of the police facility, in case there's any unknowns that occur with that project as well. The sidewalks, we're looking to put three hundred thousand dollars into sidewalks, we have been replacing them in a complete streets model for the last decade, however, Brett and I have walked around with several council members, and there are some areas of the city we may be able to get to outside of that complete streets model where we're just doing sidewalk improvements. So we would like to reserve three hundred thousand dollars, that'll be in addition to what we use CHIPS fundings for, for our complete streets model. Compensated absences, every year we have retirees that we do need to pay out for certain days that they've saved and have the ability to cash in upon retirement, and I'm recommending a hundred thousand dollars for that. The retirement reserve, the retirement reserve is specifically for when our retirement bills come in higher than the estimate, and we need to pay those out, or if we need to use it in the budgeting process, so I'd recommend a hundred thousand to that account. And then lastly, parking lot reserves, two hundred and fifty thousand, this is specifically to resurface the Bureau of Maintenance parking lot. If you haven't driven over there and gone into the potholes that are there, somewhere like sinkholes, it is really difficult, and it's hard when we're purchasing new trucks to have them drive through it when they're filled with salt, it's a lot of wear and tear. So that parking lot has been on our parking lot and sports management plan for the last eight to ten years, and it's time, I guess.
Definitely time.
Yep. So I recommend that the city council allocate two point one million dollars, as described in the resolution, to restrict reserves for future uses. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, and talk about the audit and/or the reserve funds.
Any questions?
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. I appreciate that you came to look at our sidewalks, because I do get numerous complaints, and I do get pictures from people, and I like the idea of just replacing sections, because I think we need, you know, I know replacing a whole street is way prettier, it's more pleasing to the eye, but we need stuff that's utilizable and usable, and maybe that's three or four blocks on each street, or ten blocks, and the cost goes way, way down, so you can do a lot more fixing for safety as well.
Yep.
So, thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I think it's absolutely vital, you know, local governments are notorious for construction procurement, and then they don't know how to pay for it or take care of it, you know, and we've seen that in our own community here, and I think it's absolutely vital. But also, I think it's very vital that we do not rob some of these reserve funds in a year or two to pay for other things that aren't part of this. We really need to take care of our infrastructure, and like you said, we're buying new fire trucks we have to pay for, we need the bonds and all that, the interest rates can go. This, it was a good plan, it was presented to the Audit Committee, and everybody thought it was pretty good. Thank you.
I'm confused, because I don't ever recall us procuring something without being able to pay for it, but, I mean, maybe I'm missing something, but...
Well, if you can pay for it earlier and not have to stretch it out.
Oh, right, not to pay cash and everything.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Got it.
Right.
Anyone else? Are we in consensus and to move that to the next business meeting? The unassigned fund balance zoning code?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Many of you will remember when the city undertook the planning effort in about 2016, seventeen, that culminated in the adoption of the Comprehensive Plan Update. Among several recommendations in the plan, one of the significant recommendations was that we update our zoning code, and really, it dovetails nicely in what Eric was saying in that we need to have flexible zoning if we are going to be able to have more housing in different areas than we've had in the past, specifically if it's an industrial or commercial area that might lend itself to housing. So as the manager at the time left, and we went through reorganization here at the city, I think it's time that we get back to this process and update, and this is just the zoning code update, so I'm asking that city council allocate seventy-five thousand dollars and commit it, so this would be committed fund balance, where you, it's not a reserve, it's committed for the specific use, so we could move forward with the process. It would probably be a nine-to-twelve, thirteen-month process where we would have a formal committee that gets together, typically we'd invite members of the existing planning committee and the zoning Board of Appeals, and citizens to be part of that committee. We will do public outreach through the process, so it'll be, it is a planning process, but in the end, you'd have an approval and a public hearing to change the zoning code. So again, it's a long process, but long overdue, and we have had it as one of our goals from the Comprehensive Plan and the city's strategic plan for several years.
How did you come up with that amount, seventy-five thousand?
Well, I've seen other comprehensive plan studies in totality that have cost that or double, and they did the full comprehensive plan and rezone, so I was thinking, we plan to put it out for RFP, either with our pre-qualified engineers or open it up totally, I haven't made that decision yet, but I was hoping this would be enough to bring in the consultant to guide us through the process, because we definitely do need an expert sitting with us through the process. But with that, it would be staff members and, like I said, committee members and citizens that participate.
Are you aware of any other municipalities in this area that have done, that have gone through this?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Regularly, usually every ten years.
Every ten years?
Yeah, generally, you want to do the update to the comprehensive plan and then follow along with the update to the zoning code to make it consistent with the comprehensive plan. It's just in this instance, between the combination of management changes and COVID, there was a slight delay in being able to take the next step.
Yeah, the intent was, at the time, when I was actually a member of the Comprehensive Plan Team, because I was a member of the Planning Committee, was to take that next step immediately, but again, we did have a management change, and then there was COVID. So we're five years behind at this point, but we really do think there would be value in taking the recommendations from the Comprehensive Plan and looking through the zoning code and making necessary changes to plan for the future, especially as it relates to housing.
Anyone else? We're in consensus to move transferring seventy-five thousand dollars for unassigned fund balance for the zoning code update.
Yes, yes.
Can we move that to the next business meeting? We're on the...
Shore.
Shore.
Yes.
Mike, I laughed after you said it, I hit the phone, it got lost, go for it.
Sorry. Thank you, Council President, members of council. I think this is the last appropriation I'm asking for tonight, but I'm looking to have council appro- council approve $2 million in the unassigned sewer fund balance to the sludge reserves. It's a very specific reserve related to our wastewater treatment plant. We have undertaken, as you all are aware, a headwork study, which we'll be very excited to present to you in the near future, hopefully by Christmas, right Brett? You getting ready for that?
Christmas, yeah.
Yep.
It'd be a great Christmas gift.
Yep. However, during that process, we did conduct what's called a bathymetric survey, where it measures the level of sludge in the ponds, and we discovered that A2 is the pond that needs to be cleaned most urgently, I'd say, or first in our, in our process. So we will be going back out to bid for those, and the estimated cost is between $2 and $6 million. There's only a few companies that do this type of pond cleaning, and it's pretty intricate because we have to remove what's called the air header systems and the diffusers inside the pond. Those are the pieces that make it bubble and make the bacteria reaction occur to digest the waste. And also, there is a layer underneath there, what's it called?
Liner.
A liner inside of there, so you can't just excavate it like normal, so slightly delicate process, but we would like to prepare for this to move forward and assign those funds to restricted for sludge removal in that pond. The last time we did it was 2016, many of you were here. I don't know if Matt Worth did a field trip, but we're certainly willing to bring you out so you can see the process.
Anytime.
I just have a couple of questions on the resolution. So contact dredging is what we're talking about?
Yes.
So that's what it's called, contact dredge?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought. But the wording in the part is a little confusing, whereas the city of Batavia is desirous to pay for the upcoming sludge removal? Couldn't we just simplify that and city of Batavia desires to pay for the...
Sure.
I mean, just to simplify it?
Yeah.
I mean, when I read it, I'd like, I had to look at it like three times, I didn't understand what the heck it was going on there. I thought it was a typo. Other than that, I had no problem, I just thought we clean it up before the resolution is official. Brett, how much was the sludge removal in 2016?
Ooh, they might actually want to get to...
Maybe 1.7-ish, something like that? Don't quote me on that, but I could get that number for you.
For the 2016?
Is it like 1.7?
Yes.
Right?
At least.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep, and there are, not only do they remove the sludge, but they actually take ownership of it, so the organic material is no longer the responsibilities of the cities at that time, and they have to dispose of the waste, so it's quite a process. But, yep, we do, once we get that cleaned out, we'll then start planning for other ponds to be cleaned.
Okay, so are we in consensus to move that to business?
Yes.
Ice rink chiller replacement.
Yes, thank you, Council President and members of council. As part of the chiller replacement process, which we did talk about tonight, the city needs to declare lead agency status and find a seeker determination for the project, because the replacement of the chiller is in kind, it falls under a Type II action for seeker, and I recommend that city council declare seeker Type II action for the replacement of the chiller at the David McCarthy Ice Arena.
Any questions on that? Are we in consensus to move that to the business? I think it's moved. Creek Park committed fund balance.
Thank you, Council President. The city approved last fall the use of $10,800 of assigned fund balance for a contract with Benchmark Turnkey to perform limited-scope environmental services at Creek Park. The city had assigned previously $15,000 in funds into a committed fund balance for Creek Park many years ago, and while we waited for the transfer of 60 Evans from the town to the BDC so we could get underway with the environmental study, the firm we were working with Benchmark Turnkey merged with another firm called Ro-Rox?
Roux.
Roux. It's French. R-O-U-X. And because of that, we'd like to enter into a new contract to have the work done. The cost did go up slightly to $11,300. We'd also like a contingency of $3,700 in case there is any further testing they need to do when they're onsite and they're working to test the site at Creek Park.
So that lines up with the original $15,000 that we had budgeted for.
Yep, correct.
Any questions on that? So are we in consensus to move that to the business? Doyers Stadium lease agreement?
Yes, and I apologize for the folks from the Muck Dogs that sat through the entire meeting, but we appreciate you very much for being here. Can USA has operated for three seasons at Doyers Stadium, and I'd say they've been very successful. They've come and update council each of those three years on the successes they've had, not only with the Batavia Muck Dogs, but with the community, with the groups they brought to the stadium, and just bringing vibrancy back to our fields. We have been discussing a lease extension. The current contract is in year three of five. They have requested that the city provide an extension option to the contract. So this is very similar to the ice rink contract we entered with that operator. The extension is up to three terms at five years each, and they're proposed in the new agreement. They pledge to make aesthetic improvements at the stadium to pay rent in each of those years as listed in the contract and capital fees. So I recommend the city approve the lease agreement with Can USA.
I just want to say thank you for all you've done out there. I mean, it's, I see signs all over the place, fireworks, Fourth of July, I mean, you're really doing a great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are we in consensus to move that to the business?
Absolutely.
Mixed Place Rezone?
Yes, thank you. Director of DPW Brett Frank is going to help me explain the memo and resolution you have before you on the rezoning of Mixed Place. Council will remember sending this to the PDC for consideration. The PDC, let's see, they recommended that we rezone the parcel. However, upon coming back to us, we had a staff discussion, and we wanted to see if the city would be interested, instead of having to rezone the entire parcel and a neighboring parcel, amending Chapter 190 of the zoning code, special use permits, and the zoning subsection 190-11. Those proposed amendments, and Brett, I'll let you jump in right after this...
Absolutely.
Would permit professional office use in existing buildings on properties that meet the standards in the attachments, including minimum lot sizes, parking requirements, site plan review, and impact on residential neighborhoods. So what we believe would be more appropriate than the rezone of that parcel would be to modify these definitions to allow the type of use that Mr. Smart wants to have at for Mixed Place there, and I'll let Brett jump in with more details.
So you're talking more of a simplified way of going about this thing?
Correct. Instead of, and if you actually remember what the petition was, it was to rezone one, three, and four Mixed Places.
Yeah, the whole area, almost.
But what the PDC actually came back with was to rezone three and four, but not one. So if we were to do that, you're going to rezone these two, and then you're going to have one mixed place which has to be on its own little island, the single lone R1A parcel, which really isn't super conducive to our overall plan. So that's kind of where that stemmed from, and then in this discussion with Doug Randall in the code office, along with a couple of members of the planning committee, we thought that changing those two sections of code would be more prudent as opposed to trying to rezone all three parcels and not quite getting there through the rezone and leaving one parcel kind of left on its own island. In, in these attachments, you'll see the R, or the section 190-11, I've got that highlighted and read what the actual change would be. It would allow for the existing buildings or portions of buildings to be repurposed for professional office uses, including but not limited to attorneys, physicians, dentists, architects, engineers, and similar professions determined by the Planning and Development Committee to have little or no negative impact on the residential neighborhood. And proposed usage shall be compliant with other set of standards. But also, this kind of gives us a little more, a little bit more say in what kind of what happens, because all these would be subject to site plan review. You'd have to go before the Planning Development Committee in order to make any type of change from a residential home into, you know, a mixed-use property or have offices in those buildings, and it would be limited to four offices in any building.
So if we rezoned it, then they would just go about their business, and we'd have pretty much little say in it then, right?
Correct. Once that's rezoned, you'd have that issue, and potentially you could have some type of housing going up there, you know, that you might now want to see in the future. So this gives us a little bit more, a little better set of parameters for this. Yeah, it still accomplishes what Mr. Smart wants to do. We've been in contact with him, told him this is the plan that we wanted to go forward with, and he was agreeable to these terms.
Any questions?
Council President, I'm sorry, if I could just add the process side of this, because council sent this in the first instance to PDC. PDC has made its initial recommendation to council. What we're asking for is that because of this new consideration, that you just send it back to consider these specific issues rather than the zoning petition change.
Right.
So they have that purview to look at, and then come back to you with a recommendation on that specific thing.
That's what we're basically, would be voting on next week, or next meeting, would be to send it back to them for this specific consideration.
With these considerations, right? And that would be for the October Planning and Development Committee meeting?
Right, right. So are we, everyone understand where we're going with this? We're basically making some changes and sending it back to make sure that the planning approves of what we're doing right now. They'll send it back to us at some point, and then we'll, we'll make it official.
Yeah, at that point, that's still going to be a code change, so we'd have to go through an introduction, public hearing, adoption, et cetera. So that's a legislative process, festival council.
All right. Any other questions?
I just want to make a comment. I think this is a step in the right direction Mr. Frank's making, and to tie it in with what Mr. Fix was discussing earlier, we have some absolutely enormous old homes in Batavia. There's no way we're going to get anyone to convert them back to a single-family home unless they want to have a bowling alley and an indoor tennis court, and this is one of the uses, and it's like a home-based business, basically. So, you know, we, we have to do something. There's just no way around it, and this is a step in the right direction, in my opinion.
And I just think the simplification of it is the way to go, and then having that little bit of say, if someone, like you said, if we rezoned it, you really couldn't stop somebody from putting a multifamily complex in there, because that's the way the zone kind of sets up. So this way, we slow it down and have a little more control, right? I like the way that, that turned out. So hopefully, the planning will approve this, and we can keep it in the, in the same idea, and then we'll go forward with it. Anyone else then? Okay, so we're in consensus to move this to the business meeting so that we can start that process or continue that process. Okay? Traffic, traffic safety grant?
Thank you, Council President, members of council. Each year, as you know, the police department flies the New York State Governor Traffic Safety Committee for what's called the Police Traffic Services Grant, which approves, or I'm sorry, funds overtime for police services in the, with the goal of reducing dangerous driving and serious, severe accidents or death of people in traffic crashes. This year, the department was awarded $14,456 for that. That will be used for details throughout the year, the year being October 1st to September 30th.
Any questions for the chief?
Okay, one.
Can you tell us where they're going to be so they don't turn around?
Somewhere in the city.
Somewhere in the city.
Anything else? Okay, a motion to end the meeting?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Canaly, it's next to Mr. Beely. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Canaly? Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Viakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.